The 2022 Meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners, and I am going to ask the district attorney to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I'm gonna just have some brief comments this morning to start with, and that is to note that cooler fall weather is here, and this is a great time to get outside and enjoy the beautiful fall colors. Being outdoors is great for both our physical and our mental health. Montgomery County owns and/or manages more than 6,000 acres of public open space, which includes nine parks, five historic sites, and over 96 miles of regional trails. These areas include over 125 historic and nonhistoric structures, playgrounds, a fish ladder, a working historic canal loch, a wildlife center, and archives and artifact collection of over 53,000 pieces. This fall, our parks, trails, and historic sites are hosting a variety of family-friendly fall events that are low or no cost to attend. A snapshot of upcoming events includes Trick or Trails this Saturday at Norristown Farm Park, also this Saturday, a Wolf Puppet Show at Upper Schuylkill Valley Park, a spooky evening hike at Norristown Farm Park on October 27th, and a foliage, I can't say that word, foliage, there we go, foliage hike at Green Lane Park will feature views of the changing leaves on October 29th. Our historic sites continue to offer tours daily along with interactive exhibits and digital programs. Many of these programs are kid-friendly and not that far of a drive, no matter where you live in the county. We hope you'll consider visiting one of our sites this fall, and information on upcoming events can be found on our website at www.montco PA dot org forward slash calendar, and of course you can see that link up on the screen. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Mike.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm just gonna provide an election update. As many of you know, the 2022 general election is only three weeks away and will take place on Tuesday, November 8th. And the offices on the ballot for this election at the federal level are U.S. Senator and U.S. Representatives, and at the state level, the entire House of Representatives and even-numbered Senate districts. As always, voters will have several options to cast their ballot, either absentee ballot, mail-in ballot, or in-person on November 8th. Very important, the deadline to register to vote for this election is this coming Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. Postmarks do not apply on that, so your application needs to be in the voter services office by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, October 24th. The last day to request a mail-in ballot or an absentee ballot for this election is Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. If you don't remember, if you've already applied for a mail-in ballot, you can go to vote dot PA dot gov, and you can also visit the voter services website at www.montco PA dot org slash vote by mail to apply online and download and print an application. And you may want to consider dropping off the completed application to voter services as possible in order to meet the November 1st deadline. I have an update regarding Dropbox and satellite locations. We will have 12 secure Dropbox locations available from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. from October 29th through November 8th at 8:00 p.m. Each box will be monitored using a CCTV video surveillance, and voter education staff will be on hand at each Dropbox location to assist voters with proper ballot return procedures. The ballot Dropbox locations will be in Sheltonham, Lansdale, Lower Marion, Norristown, Pottstown, Rearsford, Skipback, Upper Dublin, Upper Frederick, Upper Marion, and Upper Moreland. Pursuant to Pennsylvania Election Code, voted ballots may only be returned by the individual voter and not by any other individuals, and you may only return your own ballot, no one else's. We will also have voter services satellite offices in four locations with weekend hours in Lansdale, Pottstown, Lower Marion, Willow Grove, and you can check the website for the dates and the hours of those. And the voter services office in Norristown will also have some weekend hours. At these offices, residents will be able to apply for a mail-in ballot, receive it, complete it, and place it in a secure ballot box. Appointments are not required. For all information about voting, sample ballots, polling locations, Dropbox locations, satellite office operations designated an agent if you have an illness or disability, and general information about this election, please visit www.montco PA dot org slash voter services, or contact the voter services office at 610-278-3280. And next, we know that the colder weather is coming, and our most vulnerable residents will need some more support and protection, so some of our offices have, again, anticipated this need and have organized to start collecting resources. Your Way Home has kicked off this October, an event to collect new warm socks for men, women, and children. Socks of all sizes can be dropped off at the Human Services Center, 1430 DeKalb Street, Norristown, weekdays from 8:30 a.m. to 4:15 p.m. And this drive runs through Monday, October 31st. And the Office of Health and Human Services has started its Thanksgiving food drive, which will run until Friday, November 18th. Non-perishable boxed and canned food items are needed in addition to $10 or $25 gift or e-gift cards. More information about what is needed and drop-off or mail instructions can be found at www.montco PA dot org slash HHS donations, and if you are able, we hope that you'll consider contributing. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I also have comments related to the upcoming general election, and I would like to address the issue of undated and incorrectly dated mail-in ballots. For the United States Supreme Court's decision earlier this month, it is my understanding that when mail-in ballots are tallied on Election Day, any and all undated or incorrectly dated mail-in ballots should not and must not be counted. Furthermore, in addition to U.S. Supreme Court's recent guidance and direction as to what qualifies as a legal or illegal mail-in ballot, in 2020, the Pennsylvania State Supreme Court ruled that undated and incorrectly dated mail-in ballots could not be counted in future elections. From my interpretation and perspective moving forward, regardless of what any lower court rules, no judicial decision can legitimately override the highest court in the land, which has now found that mail-in ballots without the proper date do not count as legal votes. If undated or incorrectly dated ballots are counted as legal votes in Montgomery County, the county in which I serve is a member of both the County Board of Commissioners and the County Board of Elections, I will not certify the 2022 general election results. Furthermore, I urge other boards of commissioners and boards of elections across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to follow the guidance and ruling of the United States Supreme Court, which clearly states that undated mail-in ballots must not be counted. And that concludes my comments for today. Thank you.
All right. We are gonna reorder our meetings a bit, and we are going to go straight into announcements, commendations, presentations, and reports, and then that will be followed by public comment. So first up, we have Mr. Tom O'Brien, Administrator of Roads and Bridges, to tell us or give us an update about our county road and bridge repair. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Tom O'Brien, and I am a member of the Assets and Infrastructure Group, and I serve as the Administrator of Roads and Bridges. Next slide, please. We are responsible for maintaining and repairing 175 lane miles of roads, which is valued at $160 million. We also have 131 bridges valued at $350 million. Next slide, please. Our aging infrastructure required our commissioners to take certain actions to evaluate the funding needs for our roads and bridges. In 2013, they methodically had authorized bridge inventory completed by an engineering firm. It was found that 62 of our 131 bridges were in poor condition. The cost to repair these poor-conditioned bridges was estimated $180 million. They needed to evaluate funding needs to establish a way to pay for it and keep our roads and bridges safe, and they chose some funding from Act 89 Motor Vehicle Registration. Next slide, please. There you have a funding dilemma. We have a million cars approximately in the county. Each of us pays about $5 per registration fee, and that comes out to be about $5 million a year. If we just used the $5 million a year, it would take us 30 years to fix our aging infrastructure. In 2016, the county met and authorized bonding as a way to have more money influx into the Roads and Bridge Group to pay for our bridges and to repair them. Next slide, please. We're making great progress. I really am proud of our team. We have done wonderful things. 30 bridges have been repaired or replaced. We still have work to do. We have 25 more bridges to get up to speed, and our goal is to fix all poor-conditioned bridges by 2027. Next slide, please. Current bridge projects. To accomplish our goal of having all these poor-conditioned bridges fixed, we're going to have to have 25 bridges in design, which we do. We have 25 bridges in engineering design at various stages of permitting. We have seven bridges that are under construction and will be completed in 2022. That is a record for the county. All projects are planned, again, to be completed in 2027, which will clear our structurally-defective low-poor-income bridges from continuing to be in existence. Additional bridge maintenance and cover replacement plans are in the design stage. That way, we won't have more existing bridges become in poor condition that we need to fix them and replace those, so... Next slide, please. How's our report card looking? Well, for safety reasons, in 2017 and since, we've been evaluating our bridges every two years by qualified engineering companies. We've been very fiscally responsible with the motor vehicle funds. All of our projects have been on time and budget, 95% of our projects. That's a pretty good status. In addition, we've also obtained other funding sources to pay for our bridges, and we've been helped out by our planning group to obtain another $50 million. Over the past five years, we've paved or resurfaced 90% of our roads, and in addition to that, to increase safety, we also added epoxy paint, glass bead striping, so that people can see the lines at night and have a better way to navigate our windy roads in rural areas. And I'm very proud to announce that we have a bridge maintenance tracking program. You can sort by bridge type, bridge location, amount of money that needs to be used to fix them, what can be done with the various aspects, the package plans to repair bridges. Next slide, please. So what is this bridge maintenance package? Based on the inspections, we identify for each bridge items that need to be repaired. Previously, we were replacing all bridges, you know, they're in poor condition, take them all down, put new ones in. Now, we don't want that to happen again, so we are using a list, a detailed list, that identifies the deck, superstructure, and substructure conditions, so we can then develop packages and proposals and bid packages for new and established maintenance-funded programs. This year, we're gonna fix four bridges in our maintenance package. In the following year, we have plans to do eight bridges. That'll make sure that we maintain our mission statement where we maintain quality roads and bridges for safe passage by our residents. Next slide, please. This is some examples of some of the projects we completed under the $5 fee. This is Camp Wawa Bridge. It was an old steel truss bridge. It wasn't historically significant, and on the right, you can see the beautifully-new constructed reinforced concrete slab bridge that is now open to the public. Next slide, please. Rukowski Road, another bridge. This bridge was closed, poor condition. We used a very innovative way, concrete box, drop the box in, put in guide rails, and we now have a new structure that will allow folks to travel across Rukowski Road Bridge. Next slide, please. Swamp Pike Bridge, very challenging project. It was a very old stone arch bridge. There were some complications with detour needs. We are about to open this bridge on the 24th, weather permitting, and this is a picture, a side view of the arch, the single arch bridge that we have installed, have been installing this year. Next slide, please. In addition to handling vehicular bridges, we also help parks rehab some of their bridges. This is a historic Sunrise Mill Bridge. It was very poor condition. It's now been constructed and rehabbed by Loftus Construction Company, and it turned out to be a beautiful structure. It is a centerpiece in one of our parks now, near the Griss Mill and the other areas. We also, at no cost to the county, were able to put in a park. We have a level area that the parks will be using to have events and entertain. Next slide, please. Thank you. Please visit us at our website, www.montco PA dot org slash roads and bridges. You can get updates on our construction projects, the list of bridges we fixed, detour assessments, and other cool information. We have drone flight around one of our completed bridges. It's pretty neat. Again, any questions?
Mr. O'Brien, thank you so much for this update. When I voted to support the implementation of the annual $5 motor vehicle registration fee, this was exactly what I had envisioned, that we would be able to very rapidly accelerate the repair of the 62 structurally-deficient bridges that we had, and that once we got that work done, we would have the funding available in a steady stream to maintain all 130-odd bridges that the county owns and is responsible for, so that we would never find ourselves again in a situation where we had literally dozens of bridges that fire trucks can't go over, ambulances can't go over, school buses can't go over, leading to diversions and wasted time, sometimes when that time counts the most. So it's terrific to see what's been accomplished in just a few years. I continue to support that $5 fee and am glad to see that you've been able to realize exactly what the vision was when we put that into place a few years ago. But thanks so much, and I do just wanna make sure people are aware of that website. We often get questions from constituents about the status of various bridges, and if it's a county-owned bridge, it will be listed on that site, and there's little pop-up bubbles where you can get a sense of what's happening with that bridge. So thank you for that as well.
Mr. O'Brien, thanks for all the hard work you've done and your team. You do a great job, and I know you're very passionate about this work. Briefly, what can we tell constituents, though, when they feel it's taking a very long time? Can you just go through, I didn't know before I was here, but that once a bridge fails, it's not a snap to get it back online?
Yeah, the process to fix a bridge that fails, you require engineering design permitting. That takes about three years. Our typical construction for a motor vehicle-funded bridge is one to two years. We also have other funded bridges, Bridge 27, Fenders Mill, Kime Street, that are federally-funded programs that take way longer to get onboard because of all of the federal requirements, state requirements, and review process. So a federally-funded project takes maybe 15 years to get it to construction, and that's been a thorn in our side, whereas we're getting the money, which helps the county. On the other hand, the timing isn't as quick as funding projects that we do ourselves, so...
But just because someone doesn't see any work taking place on a closed bridge doesn't mean that there's not a lot of work taking place that can't be seen.
We have 25 bridges that are in various states of design and permitting, and many of them will be going to construction soon. Some good news is Bridge 27, Kime Street Bridge 190, they're getting near the end of design, and we're gonna be able to start working on those in 2023 after a 15-year lag. It's unfortunate it takes so long because of the review processes, but county-funded bridges, five years, boom, in and out, that's pretty fast for work. We had Hurricane Ida happen. Hurricane Ida damaged several of our bridges. One of our bridges, Bridge 6, was already in the design phase, so it was at 95% complete when it got wiped out, so a three-year lag on that bridge for design and permitting was already completed, so we're able to move Bridge 6 forward, and that's beginning, I think started last month with utility clearances. So just visit our website, you can get an update on all the various projects and their statuses, but that's a great question. I get that a lot, like, how come it's taking so long to do this? And hopefully that answers that question.
Thank you.
I appreciate the update, Tom, and I'm glad you highlighted Sunrise Mill Bridge. I, not too long ago, saw the project, and it really turned out very nicely, and credit to you and your team there, so I appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right.
We'll look forward to the next update.
Okay, thank you.
I know we're doing something right. We've people complain that we're doing too much construction, so I'll take that complaint with you today.
All righty, bye-bye, thank you.
Okay. As some of you may be aware, and I think we talked a little bit about this two weeks ago, we are beginning the process to update our county comprehensive plan, and to give us some more details on that, we have Scott France, the Executive Director of our Planning Commission, and Ann Levitt Gruberger, our County Planning Manager.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. We're excited to announce the kickoff of the planning process for Monco 2050, a comprehensive plan for a changing world. I'm here along with Ann, as you mentioned, our County Planning Section Manager. She's the Project Manager for 2050 Comprehensive Plan. This past Monday night, Ann and I were joined by Commissioner Arkush and held our first town hall for Monco 2050. And right now, I'm gonna give a brief overview of some of what was covered, but I wanna encourage everyone out there to go on our website, and I'll be mentioning this several times, montco PA dot org forward slash monco 2050, and it will show up here shortly, and see what we have there. We have some links and some opportunities to give feedback that I'll be covering in a moment. But before I get into that, I wanna give the brief overview of the purpose of a comprehensive plan and some of the issues that are ahead of us. So the first purpose, educate on the county's strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. And because we do this essentially every two years, or every 10 years, thank God, by state law, it's a great time to take a deep dive into the data that's available, do the analysis, and figure out how that's gonna affect the context of establishing these goals and implementation steps. And so we're currently assembling that data. We'll be forming the baseline for the visioning and goal-setting that's gonna take place in 2023 and 2024. Second, establish guidelines for growth and development. We review at the Planning Commission every land development proposal, and each letter that we write incorporates a section on consistency with the comprehensive plan, so we're always striving to keep those goals in front of the public eye and in front of our opportunities to affect development. Third, guide municipalities and other local leaders in making decisions. This comp plan gives us all goals and principles to rally around and then figure out how to adhere to those goals when the decision-making time comes. County plans and local municipal plans are required to have general consistency, so this, again, is an opportunity to collaborate, to recognize where we have the same goals and to talk about those differences that do exist. And then evaluate key, I'm sorry, develop priorities for funding and investment. This is an area we're gonna be focusing on a lot with this comprehensive plan. In the past, you can look to our transportation projects being represented very specifically. Those were big projects that need big funding dollars, and they're identified in the plan to obtain those. There's other areas that we're gonna have big projects as well, especially as issues become more regionalized and we have more funding opportunities. And so we want the comp plan to address more specific implementation, and that can lead to support on big projects as well as finding the dollars to help fund them. And then finally, evaluate how key resources and landscapes will be preserved. When we talk about growth, we should also talk about preservation, whether it's the open space and natural resources or the built environment that has established decades, even centuries, of charm and functionality. The comp plan gets to take the big-picture approach and look at how we can keep these preserved areas and achieve a greater good through connectivity and a regional outlook. Next slide. As many of you hopefully know, we do have a comprehensive plan right now, Monco 2040, and we think it's been our most successful comprehensive plan to date. It was adopted in 2015, and it was a plan meant to be implementable. Its goals were focused on measurable actions that the county, across all of its various departments, along with our partners, could achieve with real progress. Each year since it was adopted in 2015, we publish an implementation update at the beginning of the year, which helps us keep track of all the work that's done, and it's striking each year we do it to see just how many things are accomplished and how they tie into these larger goals to keep the county prospering. And it's also important that it recognizes not just what's happening in the Planning Commission, not what's happening in all of the county departments, which is a huge allotment in itself, but also our municipalities, our nonprofits, and the business community, and other agencies that are helping achieve these goals. And then finally, the Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Program was also created by the commissioners after the adoption of Monco 2040 in 2016, and that program has been a great tool to allow local communities to fund projects in their community with county dollars achieving the goals of the county comprehensive plan. Over $12.5 million has been granted in this program so far. There are 113 projects, and 51 of our 62 municipalities have participated and benefited from the projects in this program. If you go through any region of the county, you could see a string of improvements that have come about because of this program, and it's really inspiring to see communities using the money, using the opportunities to reach these common goals. Next slide. So back to the 2050 effort. I just wanna quickly mention some of the issues that are in front of us. You notice the tagline, "A Comprehensive Plan for a Changing World," and the last couple of years has been really monumental and prompting all of us to acknowledge the notion of change, and it's happening all around us. Climate change is one of the obvious ones, the increase in temperatures, it's likely to become even more profound in the next couple of decades, and what effects this is gonna have, one of those being the increasingly likely occurrence of severe weather. We're already still reeling and unfortunately still looking at the impacts from Hurricane Ida last year, and we know there are future severe weather events ahead of us. Health concerns, the pandemic, not much needs to be more said. That exposed how important health, public health, is. It crosses all planning issues and really all quality of life issues as well, and it opened up some opportunities and some clear notices on how our health systems function when really put to the test. Energy procurement, with technology, we have new opportunities to become more sustainable in both ways of providing energy and also utilizing it in our county operations. Next slide. Population growth, we gained more people in the last decade than we did the decade before, and usually that is not the case in a mature county like ourselves. But people wanna be in Montgomery County, both to live, to work, to put their businesses, and we need to accommodate what is coming. It's not an option to just say, "Don't come to Montgomery County." We don't wanna say that, but we have ways, there are opportunities within that to handle growth and revitalize some of our communities with those opportunities. Or, not next slide, I'm sorry. People and Goods Movement, we might think of this in terms of transportation, but again, technology is really transforming opportunities here, how we get to places, how things get to us, and it's not just the automobile, of course. Different modes are really prevalent, and we wanna facilitate those as a way to both support and be complementary to the vehicle opportunities. Equity and Diversity, the county's becoming more diverse, that's a fact, and we need to make sure that all voices have an opportunity to be heard, and all communities get the opportunity to thrive, because that makes us all stronger. And finally, protecting natural and historic resources. With all this change, the challenge to maintain these assets only grows as time passes, so we need to plan together in order to protect them. All right, so what comes next? Next slide. There's the website address. It'll be here on out, and again, encourage you to go there. This is gonna be a long process, and we're just getting started. Next slide. The planned adoption is for the mid or first half of 2025, so we essentially have about two and a half years ahead of us. Right now, we're assembling background materials, having internal focus meetings, identifying issues that will come out and that we wanna discuss with the public. The website is now open, and we're now soliciting early feedback. There will be many future opportunities for feedback. This is only the beginning. I wanna make sure that message is heard, and there'll be different ways of hearing from our residents and communities. So an advisory committee is expected sometime next year, public workshops on themes and goals, and the continued outreach, as I mentioned. And then the draft policy plan, which will eventually be what we talk about for adoption in 2025. Next slide. If you go on the website, I really am hoping that as many people as possible will take our survey. We're gonna have it up there for a while. It's a nice way to... It's a nice way to, there's some questions there on rankings and identifying issues. There's some open-ended questions that you can respond to. It's a good way to put your voice out there and help us ascertain where people stand on different things. That, you can get the link directly on the website, so you don't have to worry about any of the details there in the corner. Next slide. We also have what's called a padlet. If you're not familiar with this, it's a great tool. Consider it something similar to an online community bulletin board. You have the ability to post your own message or comment on your own card on that board. And we have it organized now under general topics or categories that you can put your comment in. So we're going to be using this continually. There'll probably be more specific ways of using it with different topics and different questions to ask. So the best thing that I can continue to say is to keep checking in, keep coming to the website, and see what's there and give us your input. And then finally, we're also looking, I'm sorry, next slide. We're also looking at pop-up events. If you have a community event or a gathering, please give us a, send us an email, give us a call. We're interested in getting out there and hearing from as many people as possible. And at these times, you know, it's nice to have direct communication with residents and with communities. So we already have a few scheduled, and we'll do our best if you let us know. In fact, if you go to the next slide, that communication is Ann Levitt-Gruberger's email address for now. That's also on the website. And you can send anything directly to the Planning Commission as well, and we'll be able to get it and process that as well. So my last comment is just that, again, we need your help. It's not our job to come up with a plan and tell everyone what it says. We want to provide the facts, the figures, the ideas, the alternatives. But then we want to hear from everyone and come to a consensus on what the best way forward is going to be. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. France. And I just want to emphasize that last point, that this comprehensive plan is an opportunity for all of you listening today, your friends, your neighbors who live here in the county, to help create the county that you want to live in for the next several decades. And this is the best way to do it because this plan is an overarching map for all sixty-two of our municipalities. It guides our work here as commissioners on practically a daily basis. Often when people come to us with a new idea, one of my first questions is, well, is it in the comprehensive plan? Is this something that we've been imagining or envisioning? And is this an opportunity to make it real? So I really encourage folks to get engaged and get involved in this. And Mr. France, just a couple of questions about how we're going to ensure that we really do give every voice the opportunity to be heard during this process. First question is, the survey and the padlet, can they be translated into other languages?
Yes. Right at the moment, please send us a request if you need that service. We're going to do it, at least for Spanish and Korean is our, we're setting that up now.
I'm expecting those translations back within the next couple of days.
Yeah.
Okay. And then if there's other languages, people can reach out and we can find a way to accommodate that. I can provide paper copies of the survey as well. Okay, great. Not everyone wants to do an online survey. Sure, yeah, exactly. And then just in terms of outreach to community groups, I know we learned a lot from the work that the Recovery Office did in terms of really trying to reach organizations that maybe had never partnered with the county previously. Can you just talk a little bit about how you're going to make sure we really do give every resident here the opportunity to contribute?
Yeah, I heard those as well and saw that happening with the Recovery Office, and that was an inspiration to us. So we're going to take advantage of that. And the Communications Office has been great maintaining those contacts. So we've already reached out, and we had some of them represented at the town hall. And we'll continue to send out targeted emails to them specifically. But generally, our job is to make sure everybody hears about this. It does, it takes all sections. And we know in the past, it's easy to identify areas that weren't represented or just missed out. And maybe it wasn't through the fault of any reason other than the effort wasn't made strong enough. So we're going to make sure that that happens.
Great, thanks.
Thank you for the update and look forward to the process.
I just have a question, Scott. In 2015, the 2040 Monco comprehensive plan was implemented. And now the goal in 2025, have the 2050 comprehensive plan. Is the goal moving forward to do this in ten-year increments that we plan out a decade ahead?
Yeah, the municipality's planning code, which is the law that we all follow from Pennsylvania legislation, actually requires, there's no enforcement on it, but it does require a ten-year update. So most municipalities are also held to that standard. And we certainly will be maintaining that schedule.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have District Attorney Kevin Steele to talk about Drug Takeback Day.
Good morning. Good morning. So it's that time of year. We do it twice a year. And you can see up there, and I brought posters if anybody wants to take them with them. We have them up in the police departments and trying to get the word out. And look, I'm very appreciative of the time with you all to try to get this word out on our program here. It's the twenty-ninth. We're hoping people will put it on their calendars and make a point of, you know, getting stuff out of their medicine cabinets on that day, you know, to make their home safer. So right now, we have approximately thirty-three police departments doing it at their police departments. And we also have a couple of the police departments doing it at local grocery stores. And so the grocery stores that are participating this year are Giant Food Store in Upper Morland and Redner's Warehouse Market in Montgomery Township. So we hear occasionally that people are more comfortable in going to a public place, so they'll be manned with police officers to try to address that. Next slide, if you would. That's okay. I told Kelly I was going to take her to court to do some of these things for me, but that may not be working out. So I have to go back to our tech guys. Okay, so just a couple of slides to run through. What are we taking and accepting? So, you know, we're really focused on prescription drugs here, but tablets, capsules, inhalers, vaping products, creams, ointments, nasal sprays, and pet medicines. That's another factor that we're seeing out there. So we encourage not only get them out of your medicine cabinet, but get it out of wherever you're keeping your pet's medicine on things. And in terms of, in terms of how to do this, the pill bottles. You know, sometimes they have identifying information on them. I would say, don't worry about it because they're going right into police hands. They're coming to our detectives, and then we take it immediately for destruction. But if people are concerned about them, put them in plastic bags. You can black out the identifying information on them. But I just want people to also know the process of we're just, we're taking it right to get it, destroy it safely as we do it. If you go to the next slide. All right, what we're not taking is needles and things like that, as well as liquid medicines. So I am always astounded at this, and we keep track of it and we keep, you know, adding on. But we started this in 2010, and, you know, we're over a hundred thousand pounds at this point. And, you know, and the process is the police bring it, we collect it, it's boxed up, we weigh it, and then we take it and incinerate it. And you saw in that previous picture, you know, part of that weighing process that goes on. But, you know, twenty-two, you know, over five thousand pounds, October, twenty-two, over six thousand pounds. So, you know, this is significant. And what I'll also say about it is that, you know, this means that there's over-prescribing, you know, going on and has been. And we know historically, this is an avenue for people to go down the wrong track. So like, get it out of your houses. You know, if you didn't use what was prescribed to you, destroy it. If you need it in the future, go back to the doctor and he'll give you some more. But to save these and hold on to these things, you know, have led to problems. Kids getting a hold of it, you know, is one of the aspects that we've seen too often in this. You know, sometimes, you know, we've seen, you know, folks, you know, who are selling their house and people are coming to look at their houses. Well, people are going through their medicine cabinets when they do that and losing those type of things. So this is just a need to try to address this. If you can go to the next one. All right. Too many people are dying of overdoses. But what I will say, and when you look at the chart that we've put together here, is part of the why we do this. You know, if you look at 2020, then into 2021, we were different. We were different than the rest of the nation. We went down. And, you know, and that's, and that's a great thing. But it's not down low enough. And we got to keep our foot on the gas with this and keep trying to address this to make sure, you know, that those drugs are not out there and getting in the wrong hands and taking us down this. We, you know, are addressing this in a lot of different ways. And I want to applaud the concerted effort because, you know, when I'm dealing with some of the statewide things as the president of the District Attorneys Association and I'm on the board of the National District Attorneys Association, not many places are handling it like we are. And I suspect and believe that it's this concerted effort by you all, by, you know, people working in public health, by law enforcement that is helping us to trend the right way. You know, we've developed programs where law enforcement officers can take people right to treatment. The naloxone that has been put in first responders' cars saves a lot of people out there. The things that we're looking at to try to get into the communities that you all have been behind to try to identify people that are going down this track, that's all part of it. And also this effort, you know, to take these drugs, you know, out of circulation, destroy them safely so they don't end up in the landfills, so they don't end up in our water system because people are putting them down there. Let's destroy them safely so that we can get to the right thing. And this effort that has been made, you know, from the Chiefs Association and the commitment that they have to do this with all of these departments coming and doing it. And additionally, the chiefs that have given us the resources to try to investigate all of these overdose deaths as homicides. And, you know, that's making an impact because we're getting to these issues quickly and trying to address them quickly. And I'm confident that that's saving lives. So I, you know, I hate to say we're doing well when there's that many deaths because they are, you know, sisters, brothers, mothers, fathers. Too many people are dying from this. And, you know, we got to just, we just got to keep on this to make sure that we're making that impact. If you could go to the next one, Kelly. So, you know, here's the plus for us. You know, nationally, overdoses went up fifteen percent, okay? It's the national numbers on this. We went down thirteen point two percent. So when you look at that together on where we could have been, this is significant. And, you know, I hope that we're a model for other places that are trying to address these problems because, again, a lot of people are not addressing this the way we are. And I hope we'll continue to do, and I appreciate the resources that we are given to be able to do this, to make a difference in people's lives. And I hope and pray that we will do better again this year. And I'm confident that we will, all right? We keep a close track on this. I know you all do too. And, you know, we are trending in the right direction. But, you know, I was at our HIDA meeting yesterday, and one of the things that we are addressing is all the challenges that are out there and all the new drugs that are coming in and the issues that we're having. So I always am hesitant to be overconfident that we're going to be in a place because I know of all the dangers that are out there that we are facing. So, if you go to the next one there. So back to this. We have some great folks in our office. Jill Neal, who works on these posters and tries to make it interesting. Our communications director, Kate Delano, we're sending these things out. I brought a bunch of these posters with me. We've got more. I just really hope that everybody will get the word out on this so that we can have a big showing on Saturday, October twenty-ninth. And I also want people to know that if you can't do it on the twenty-ninth, because you have things going on, there's an opportunity to do this every single day of the week. All the police departments have these boxes in their police departments. So, you know, show a little love. Go to the police department, you know, take your drugs there and give them to the police so they can get these destroyed safely. There are also a box in the courthouse. So, you know, stop by. You can see the construction that's going on, which my window's getting boarded up, so I'm not going to be able to see it anymore. But it's, you know, as you all know, this is an opportunity for people to come and do it, and they're also in some medical facility. So with that, I'll see if anybody's got any questions about it. But again, I really appreciate the time with you all and the help that you have provided in getting this out. And I just hope everybody in the community will do the same thing to make this really successful because success would be, you know, that there's no more drugs to turn in on these prescription take-back days.
Well, District Attorney Steele, thank you for this really comprehensive update. And I just want to note, and to build a little bit on some of your comments, that this work began in earnest here in the county in late 2014, early 2015 with the creation of an overdose task force, which you were very instrumental in helping to get started. And it has been that work of the task force that has done two really important things. First of all, it has taken on this challenge by readily acknowledging that substance use disorder is a chronic disease. And it needs to be treated like a chronic disease, just like asthma or diabetes or high blood pressure. And it can be treated. And it's taking that approach that has allowed a very comprehensive response from the county. And you outlined a lot of it. This is a very important piece of it. So is having Narcan available. So is making sure that people who are willing to get into treatment have a way to get into treatment. And I could go on and on. And it also starts with prevention. And we have many of our school districts now participating in programs that will hopefully help prevent teenagers and young adults from ever even starting down this path. But getting these drugs out of the house is a critical part of that, to make sure that someone doesn't just accidentally pick up the wrong thing and take it or say, hmm, let me try it. I heard from my friends. This is a great thing. Like, we just have to get these drugs out of our houses. And so thank you for being such a leader in this area and being part of this very holistic... and being part of this very holistic, comprehensive approach to treating this disease. And I firmly believe that because we treat it like the disease that it is, we're actually seeing results. Unlike so many other places that continue to stigmatize the use of opioids and other other narcotics and illegal drugs, this is a disease. It's a disease that we can treat. So thank you for being part of the solution and for leadership now for years on this issue. I think it's really starting to pay off as we see our numbers finally start to come down in significant ways.
I hope and pray that will.
I'm right there with you. One death is too many. So we are by no means patting ourselves on the back here or declaring any kind of victory. We still have a lot of work to do, but at least we're moving in the right direction.
District Attorney Steele, thank you for your leadership and your advocacy on this issue. And please express our thanks to your to your staff as well, to your team. I know that you get to present it and do it, but that they put a lot of work in this year round. So make sure that they have our thanks as well.
I will. And, you know, fortunately, they enjoy being creative on some things too. Because unfortunately, we don't get that chance that often with the work we have to do.
Obviously, I strongly urge the residents of Montgomery County to fully utilize the Take Back Day program that we have here. And as you mentioned, every day at our police departments, there's access to properly disposing medications and drugs that you no longer wish to have. And I'd like to thank you and your team. I admire and appreciate what you do every day, not only on the prescription drug front. You mentioned over prescribing and the need to get this disposed of properly, but also in the criminal front with drug busts and getting illegal drugs off our streets. Your cooperation with the district, this obviously district attorney's cooperation with the detectives and the local police departments across the county is outstanding. And it's a great value to have here. So I appreciate what you do.
Thank you. We're very we're very blessed here in Montgomery County with how well everybody works together. And, you know, the commitment of the police departments to 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 do this work has been, you know, extraordinary. Again, things you don't see in 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 all places. So I hope that this will be a very successful program. I I I agree that this is a health issue that we're facing. We're also facing one concerning violence and guns in our community. So so stay tuned. I hope you'll have me back in November for the next initiative that we have moving forward here. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to public comment. Mr. Stein, could you move the role, please?
All speakers should sign into the meeting sheet available in the back of the room. The meeting will virtually register in advance with the co-Franisco. All speakers should come to the podium if they're physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. In addition, those seeking to speak during the time set aside for public comments on items appearing on the agenda must state the specific agenda items they wish to address. Those seeking to speak during the time set aside for general public comments must identify the subject matter they wish to address. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a meeting, whether matters germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Time limit of two minutes will be monitored and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting. So the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from seats, arguing whether matters germane to county business once the solicitor has made a determination of such, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down shall be ground for removal or muting from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. And as always, the commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at commissioners@moncopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, we will begin with public comment on matters appearing on today's agenda.
Okay, our first speaker is David Morgan, who has agenda item comment on item J1.
Good morning, David Morgan Ambler, Pennsylvania. Taxpayers need town halls on the Justice Center, the largest spending project in county history, plus buildings like RFP J1 to see if we can afford them. Bucks County did their center for 86 million. So far, Monco's expenses are 400 million. You had seven town halls for the federal recovery funds this summer, and Commissioners Arkush and Lawrence commended the transparency of this process. Why have there been no town halls on the Justice Center? This project has been one of the biggest drivers of inflating our tax bills 5% and 8% last two years. Also, money is lacking for bridges and county workers helping police departments. On August 18th, the county website published three phases of the Justice Center project with pictures. Phase one apparently was completed in December 2021, but no cost is given. Phase two already has 232 million spent in one meeting on August 2021. How much more by completion in the spring of 2024? How much is this projected for 2026 for phase three? And how much is spent on this building, OMP, to reskin it? It's been serving in part as a courthouse on certain floors. Remember the solid annex that used to be standing next to the courthouse with park and mature trees? All that is destroyed. Who is directing the project? Skidmore Owens and Merrill or Scanza? We need answers. Can we afford RFP J1? I request you, Commissioner Gail, proactively to address your colleagues' spending and calling town halls. Don't wait for votes on spending. Why not start at the community college? With hundreds of millions spent for a justice center and trillions spent by Democratic administration in Washington, residents are understrained from inflation. Provide the costs. Invite the other two commissioners, even though they did not include you on the wards. It would be great to have a town hall to evaluate all buildings, including RFP J1. Let's have sunshine and stop tax increases. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a few folks online. So first we have Barb Furman. If you could just state your agenda item comment. Hi, Barb. It looks like you're unmuted. If you could just speak, we're not able to hear you. Okay, Barb, I'm gonna come back. It looks like we're having some issues hearing you. Next, we have Tasa Houseal. If you could just state your agenda item.
Good morning. Mailbox drops. The ballot box dropped.
If if you wish to discuss that, you could can bring that up under general public comment. However, that is not an agenda item on today's agenda.
Okay. Well, then that would conclude our agenda item comments. If we want to go into general?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you just let that resident go then?
Okay, Tara, Tasa, go ahead. We will move to general public comment now.
Good morning, this is Tara Houseal, T-A-R-A-H-O-U-S-E-A-L, from Lower Pots Grove.
Good morning.
I wanted to, good morning. I wanted to say thank you for putting limits on the ballot drop boxes, but I still have no confidence in them and they need to be completely removed. It is sinister and despicable to allow votes to be counted that are not properly filled out, either from absentee or mail-in. Election day is one day, not a season, not a month, not a week. Ballots need to be counted and applied on election day. I just can't stress that enough. And I wanted to, again, say thank you for putting limits on them, but it's not good enough. There should be no drop boxes at all, and they should be manned with a guard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will try to go back to Barb Barbara Furman, if you would like to speak, so we can try again. Barb, if you want to unmute there. Again, Barb, we're not hearing you on our side. Yeah. Sorry, yeah, we're not hearing you, Barb. I see that you're unmuted again, but I'm not able to hear you. So again, if anyone else has general public comment, you can use the raise your hand feature. Okay, we will go to Barb will try to come back to you. We'll go to Marilyn Muir, if you want to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
I'm Marilyn Muir with lower at in Lower Southford Township. My comments are addressing Dr. Richard Lorraine's flu update. He said most of his data is from a few years back because the last couple of years, we had a very anomalous situation in that the flu numbers were so low, the data cannot be used for statistical calculations. He that he also said there was some effort to eliminate the flu. In reality, the PCR tests used to diagnose COVID did not distinguish between the flu and COVID. It was more beneficial to the narrative to report all the positive tests as as COVID. I'm not sure why I knew this information and Dr. Lorraine didn't know about the PCR tests. I encourage everyone to watch the documentary online for for free by going to therealanthonyfauciemovie.com. And if you want this madness to end, vote for Doug Mastriano for governor. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will go to Suzanne Stepanek. Suzanne, you just have to unmute there.
Okay, can you hear me now then?
Yes.
Hello? Yeah.
Yes, good morning.
Okay, yes, my name is Suzanne Stepanek. That's S-T-E-P-A-N-E-K. I'm in Upper Southford Township. I want to mirror the comments made earlier about the drop boxes. However, one of my concerns is that there have been a lot of changes to when the drop boxes would be available. And my concern is that the public, you know, be made aware of exactly when they're available. Because I don't want people after the fact to say they were disenfranchised because they went to drop off their ballot and it wasn't there or anything like that. That said, yeah, they should be gone. But my other concern is being provided with the chain of custody documentation for exactly what happens. Because we've been told as Dropbox watchers that we are not allowed to follow the cars that are taking the ballots back to the courthouse or to see what happens once they enter the courthouse. So there's really no observable, you know, chain of custody that we can see. So I'd like to see what the procedures are. If there's some documentation written up, I think that we should have it so that we know exactly what's going to be happening. And we should also be allowed to observe all of those steps. So that's all my comments.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll try to go back to Barb Furman. Barb, if you want to unmute.
Hello?
Hello, yes.
Hello. Barb Furman, New Hanover Township. Before I start changing the order of the meeting is one thing. An hour is disrespectful of the commenters. With the midterm election less than three weeks away, this county has slow-walked cleaning voter rolls in the years since Act 77 showed us that there were hundreds of vulnerabilities in the system. As a Joe, on my street, I can tell you that at least nine names of people that have moved, and I can name half as many, that the records are completely up to date. So the Eric and Sure systems of checking change of address is at least flawed. We have no way of knowing who is a valid mail-in voter or not. The nursing home issue of who votes and who is in charge of a wonderful elderly person with advanced dementia is a conversation worth having. Signature verification matters. Dated ballots that are legal matter. In fact, the Supreme Court ruled on those things and said, don't count them. And and our Secretary of State said we are going to ignore that ruling. So that tells the voters of Pennsylvania, and for that matter, all over the country, that court rulings you like, you will say, it's the law. And those you don't, PA, you will ignore. Curing ballots is also very suspect. We can do better than that, and the Declaration of Independence is our guide. When governments override the rules and the people, they must be turned back to the people. As a Joe, I am responsible to oversee all the constituents that thoughtfully and knowingly choose to vote, both in person and in mail-in absentee. That elected office duty is being obstructed. It's not too late to do the right thing for all citizens of Monco. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our public comment. Oh, sorry, David. Go ahead. David Morgan for Monco Mamas.
Ambler, Pennsylvania. I found out more about your fine program.
Could you please state the, could you please state the topic of your general comment?
Monco Mamas.
Okay, thank you.
I found out more about your fine program, Monco Mamas, this week. Jamil Miller, program director, manager, has informed more area residents and that advocates known as doulas for expected mothers have been enrolled in training to help facilitate successful black birth outcomes. Also, building relationships at allied health centers and community centers has begun. This program is a great example of the phrase loving them both. Mother and child, keeping, keep providing resources for life of mother and child. Here are some fun facts from Children's Hospital Philadelphia website about these little wonders, the unborn children. Number one, their hearts beat in the first four weeks since conception. Two, by eight weeks, they have fingers and toes with systems well-formed, moving like runners. By the third, by the 12th week, they are fully formed, just like us. At all times, they are unique individuals with unique DNA. Delivery instead of abortion is recommended by the American Association of Pro-Life Obstetricians and gynecologists, APLOG. Pardon me?
I'd ask you to keep this on topic, please. The Monco Mamas?
Yeah, well, we're increasing successful birth outcomes rather than another alternative. So I'm just mentioning there's a professional association which recommends delivery. Delivery is Monco Mamas, right? Monco Mamas helps black birth outcomes be successful, sir. So there are also physical and emotional risks to be avoided by abortion, including a risk to first or future births. And unrestricted abortion using our tax dollars should not be promoted by candidates in this county for office. Instead, the bipartisan Monco Mamas model should be followed. By getting a free ultrasound at a pregnancy resource center, mothers and even fathers can see their very own child. Please bring back Monco Mamas next month, since our last commissioner's meeting appearance was November 2021. Recall? And abortion and love them both. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the Act 106, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to resolutions, starting with Mr. Hartman. An authorization of an open space grant award to the Heritage Conservancy. Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry.
That's okay. You're fine. Great, thanks. Good morning again. Today, the Planning Commission is seeking your authorization of a proposed open space fund grant, award of an amount not to exceed $222,200 to the Heritage Conservancy, which is a land trust for the acquisition of a conservation easement on 59.35 acres owned by Lori and Ron Barber in Lower Frederick Township. The Barber property The Barber property currently consists of three parcels totaling seventy-seven point one-five acres, containing a number of improvements, including a main residence, outbuildings, as well as sixty-two acres of riparian woodlands, six acres of fallow agricultural fields, four thousand linear feet of tributary streams, and approximately five hundred linear feet of frontage on the Perkyomen Creek. The property is located directly across the street from Lower Frederick's twenty-two acre Colonial Park and is directly across the Perkyomen Creek from Upper Southford's thirty-nine acre Romer Park and the county's Perkyomen Trail. So directing our attention to the slides, that, uh, circle around the star, which I realize is a little hard to see. Uh, the star represents where the Barber property is located. This is our trail network map, just to give you a sense of where we sit within the county and the trail network. Next slide, please. This is zooming in on the parcel itself. On the right is an aerial photograph. The outline in red shows the entirety of the seventy-seven acres that the Barbers own. On the left is a map, again, showing the Barber property. It's oriented a little bit differently than the, the photograph, but, um, you can see that to the left of the Barber property, uh, in the upper part of that left-hand, uh, uh, map is Colonial Park. That's the area in green. To the right of the Barber parcel is Perkyomen Creek. The red line is the Perkyomen Trail. And Romer Park is in that area of green that sits between the creek and the Perkyomen Trail. So you can see its proximity to all of these various features. Next slide, please. Okay. The Barber property is identified within the county's comprehensive plan, Lower Frederick's, uh, two thousand and six open space plan and their twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan. Lower Frederick's Open Space Board has identified this parcel as their number one preservation project within the township. The Barbers intend to transfer ownership of a fourteen point eight acre parcel to their son under the condition that his land must also be placed under a separate conservation easement in the future. Therefore, the focus of this funding request is the sixty-two point three-five acres that would remain under the ownership and control of Lori and Ron Barber. And, um, I think I can, okay, bear with me here. So you can see right here, this is a parcel line. The area above that parcel line right here is the fourteen point acres that they intend, oh, thanks Kelly, uh, intend to give to their son in the future. The area below that line, uh, that's primarily wooded with the green, uh, poli- light green polygon in the middle of it, go down, there you go. That whole lower area is the sixty-two acres that we're looking at, uh, at today. So, um, the Barbers are open to a public access, uh, trail on their property, which is a positive outcome of this transaction. And the proposed conservation easement on the Barber's sixty-two acre property would include a three acre minimal protection area around most of the improvements and a fifty-nine point three-five acre area of highest protection, primarily covering the site's natural features. So in that lower parcel that we were just looking at, that light green area in the middle. Keep going to the left there, Kelly. Keep going. There you go. That light green area there is the area of minimal protection. Everything else around it is the area of highest protection. So for the sixty, sixty-two acre parcel owned by Lori and Ron Barber, the Heritage Conservancy is seeking easement acquisition funding from three sources. PA, DCNR, Montgomery County, and Lower Frederick Township. But only for that fifty-nine point three-five acre of highest protection because DCNR funds can only be used to preserve, preserve areas that are designated as highest protection. An appraisal for the Lori and Ron Barber parcel resulted in a value of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the fifty-nine point three-five acre area. And including project and closing costs, the total project cost is estimated at five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. To cover these expenses, the Heritage Conservancy anticipates funding as follows. From DCNR, uh, to whom they will be making a, a DCNR, uh, grant application this fall, they are, uh, anticipating fifty percent of that total project cost or two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Lower Frederick Township, per the township's open space board, an amount up to fifteen percent of the appraised value or eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that amount is, and contribution from the township is subject to, uh, approval and a determination from their supervisors who are meeting next week. And from Montgomery County, up to forty percent or that two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars, which again is based on a ten percent contribution from Lower Frederick. On October fourteenth, uh, just this past week, the Montgomery County Open Space Board voted unanimously to recommend that the Montgomery, that Montgomery County Award an open space grant to the Heritage Conservancy in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars toward the acquisition of the Barber Conservation Easement. It's a lot of information, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let me put a motion on the floor here. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize an open space grant to the Heritage Conservancy not to exceed two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars for the acquisition of a conservation easement on fifty-nine point three-five acres of the Barber property. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. So one question, this looks like a great opportunity, obviously, Mr. Hartman. But, um, i- if any of those other two funding sources fall through for some reason, we are not then obligated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, any, and any time to, um, uh, to assure that if, when we write a grant agreement for an open space grant with an organization like the Heritage Conservancy, we always say that it's contingent upon successful acquisition of the other funding.
Great, okay. Okay, in that case, we will move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Great.
Next, we have authorization to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Highlands Trail.
Right, so now we're on to a trail project. Uh, today, we're going to be seeking your approval to apply for grant funding from PA DCNR's Fall Two Thousand Twenty-two Supplemental Round Twenty-eight C-two P-two Funding Cycle, uh, to assist with funding construction costs for a portion of the Highlands Trail, which is a proposed public trail within an existing county trail easement in the Musser Scott Reservation, which, as you may know, is located in Marlborough Township. The proposed trail project is part of the planned route of the Highlands Trail in Pennsylvania, which is a three-hundred mile trail network that extends from the Delaware River in Regalsville, Pennsylvania, to the east and west of the Maryland border in south-central Pennsylvania, just west of Gettysburg. The Pennsylvania Highlands has been designated as a Pennsylvania major greenway by the Commonwealth. So I direct your attention to the slide up on the screen here. That area in green represents the Highlands area within the state of Pennsylvania. On the right-hand side, or the east, that's the Delaware River separating New Jersey from Pennsylvania. And you can see that the Highlands area continues in a southwesterly direction and then drops into Maryland, as I said just a minute ago, just west of Gettysburg. And the green line that you see within there is the Highlands Trail that will sit within the Highlands, uh, uh, area. Specifically, uh, the trail project is locate, located along Price Road and along the east side of Upper Ridge Road, from Price Road south to the entrance of Camp Delmont in the Musser Scott Reservation. Kelly, if you could jump to the next slide for me? Okay, I just want to give you a little bit, uh, more context and more broadly. That area in the red circle is where the Highlands Trail is located within the county's trail network. Again, this is the trail network map, and next slide, please. And this is zooming in even more. The area in the circle is the area that we're talking about today. Um, to give you a little bit of geographic context, uh, you can see Quaker Town up at the top there in Bucks. And then the, the Highlands Trail is the area in green. Anything that's dark green is already built. And you can see the dash line that then comes down, enters the red circle and then eventually drops into Green Lane where it will connect with the Perkyomen Trail. The area that we're talking about today is the red dotted area that you can see within the red circle. Next slide, please. Great, okay. So in twenty twenty-one, the Appalachian Mountain Club contracted with trail consultant Campbell Thomas for design, engineering, and permitting services for this portion of the Highlands Trail. And to date, Campbell Thomas has developed draft preliminary engineering drawings for the trail along Upper Ridge Road. So this is zoomed in even more. Uh, down the bottom left of that, uh, topographic map is Green Lane. And you can see, uh, there are two portions that Campbell Thomas is currently working on. Uh, the top part is signed-on-road-trail, that's along Price Road. That, uh, is going to be, uh, a, a, a trail that is on the roadway with signage. It's not going to be a separated side path. The traffic on Price Road is, uh, low enough where they feel that that's a safe way to go about this. But when that, uh, on-road trail hits Upper Ridge Road where those red arrows are and then heads south toward Green Lane, it will become a side path that will sit within the, the trail easement that the county currently holds on the Musser Scott Reservation. Both of those segments are about a mile in length, just to give you some context. And the plan is to bring it further south into Green Lane. Ultimately, the public trail to be developed in the, in the Musser Scott Reservation will fill a key gap in the Highlands Trail project. The Highlands Trail includes paved multi-use trails, such as the Perkyomen Trail, but it also includes a spectrum of trail types to accommodate a wide range of non-motorized uses. Plans to extend the Highlands Trail to and through Green Lane Borough with a connection to the terminus of the Perkyomen Trail are under active exploration. And I will note that although the Highlands Trail is not a designated circuit trail, its regional footprint, experiential qualities, and connections to other significant trails in Pennsylvania and beyond make it an important piece of the recreational landscape. On the funding front, we are planning to request one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from DCNR's supplemental round twenty-eight C-two P-two Grant Cycle to assist with funding construction costs for this portion of the trail. The Appalachian Mountain Club will assist with the preparation of the application. AMC has already secured about one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of funding for this project, including a one hundred thousand dollar grant from the Pennsylvania DCED. And this one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars will serve as the required one-to-one match for the requested DCNR C-two P-two funds. And lastly, as you know, DCNR requires all grant applicants to pass a resolution, acknowledging that if awarded the grant, the applicant will comply with the terms and conditions of grant policy and that this document will become the terms and conditions of a grant agreement between DCNR and the county if the county is awarded the grant. And the county open space board did meet on October fourteenth, and they unanimously recommended, uh, to you the submission of this C-two P-two Grant Application. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Highlands Trail project. Be it further resolved that Mr. Scott France, Executive Director of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, is an authorized signer to the application and any agreements issuing therefrom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Uh, Mr. Hartman, assuming that this goes through and we're successful in getting this grant, will the county be responsible for the maintenance of this new part? Or is the Appalachian Mountain Club or?
So the way this would work is that, um, for the portion that is on-road on Price Road, because that's not within the county trail easement that we have with the Boy Scouts, we would not be responsible for maintaining that. And frankly, the maintenance for the on-road portion would not be as significant as the part that would be a side path along Upper Ridge Road. The part along Upper Ridge Road, which is a side path and within the county trail easement that we have, we would be required to maintain that. We have been discussing with the Appalachian Mountain Club the process of maintenance. Uh, and they have a very strong volunteer corps with AMC. And they said that they would be willing to assist with, um, some of the maintenance of the trail, uh, once it's ultimately constructed. But we are responsible technically for it.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, then, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thanks so much.
All right, next we have Mr. Edmund from our, the Assistant Director of Transportation and Long Range Planning to talk about the awards that are being proposed for funding through the Montgomery County Transportation Program. Good morning.
Yes, good morning Commissioners, thank you for your time. Thank you for having us here today. Uh, before you, today is an action to consider, uh, the selection committee's recommendations for this year's grant awardees for the twenty twenty-two Montgomery County Transportation Grant Program. Just take a couple of minutes just to remind, uh, you and our audience of what this program is about, next slide. So the goals of this program, which as you heard Mr. O'Brien earlier today talking about the five-dollar vehicle registration revenue, um, this is a carve-out of that. The Commissioners, uh, do, uh, use most of that money to repair our county-owned bridges, but they also put a piece of that in the budget, uh, to help pay for this program so that we can distribute some of this money around our county. And so the goal is established five years ago, including equitably distributing it around our county, um, funding projects that are municipal, uh, increasing the overall transportation investment, and trying to meet the goals of Monco twenty forty, a shared vision. Funny how a couple of things all kind of converge here today, uh, in this presentation. Next slide. So again, as I was alluding to, uh, it comes out of the vehicle registration revenue. Uh, it's in the county capital budget, that's a snapshot of our budget for this year. It's a million dollars. Um, and the reason why we do it is because a third of our municipalities, about twenty-one of them, don't own any county, county-owned roads or bridges. So, uh, when our municipalities and our citizens pay into this five-dollar vehicle registration revenue, if they don't have any bridges or roads, they don't see any investment from that money. This is a way to make sure that they have the opportunity to do so. And our municipalities own lots of miles of roads and bridges and signals, uh, but they only get about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to do it. So that might be rehabbing a bridge or maybe two bridges a year. And as anyone knows, in the places in which we live, they own so many roads and so many bridges, that's just a drop in the bucket. So, uh, that number is actually up a little bit, uh, since last year, but it's down overall for the last couple of years. So this is a way to, like we said, increase our transportation investment. Slide. So nothing really changed for the twenty twenty-two round. Everything, the parameters, they generally are the same. It's a million dollars, it's for our municipalities only. Uh, we fund construction and that there is a tiered match system so that our smaller municipality or a smaller borough can still have a shot at getting a reasonable grant to do a reasonable-sized project. Not every township and not every borough have the same fiscal capacity, so this is a way to try to make it possible for everyone to participate. Next slide. Uh, eligibility, this really is a roadway program. That's the way the state, uh, designed the, the five-dollar vehicle registration revenue. So unlike so many grants that we have in our county, this is not for trails. This isn't even really for sidewalks, although there are certain instances in which they would apply. But it really is for the motoring public, more or less. So improving our roads, uh, improving our signals, uh, making it easier for pedestrians to cross. You'll see that come up again in a little bit. Um, street lighting, uh, those are the types of things that this program can provide for. Slide. So who evaluated the projects? We have a twelve-person review committee. Every year we've done this. We have pulled, uh, citizen members from a couple of our boards, the Planning Commission, the Transportation Authority. Again, these are, these are people that live in Montgomery County. They're civic leaders in Montgomery County. They're workers, the, they're, they're, for the most part, regular people. Um, us at Planning Commission, we as staff had some input. And then, of course, we involve PennDOT too, because we don't want to recommend a, uh, project that PennDOT at the end of the day says, now this doesn't meet the statutory requirements. So we involve them to make sure that everything is buttoned up. Slide. And so they looked at a couple of things. What's the overall impact? Uh, are these projects being submitted, are they part of local plans, right? Um, are they close to starting construction? Can the municipalities actually support this with their match? These are all considerations to make sure that the best projects get picked and recommended to you. Next slide. And of course, timeline is important because we try to give our municipal partners lots of time to prepare for this. We know, being on a different side of, of the equation, uh, how frustrating it can be when a grant program is announced and you have two or three weeks to apply. A lot of work goes into these applications. You saw Mr. Hartman, he had to come to you as the Commissioners to get authorization. So there's a lot of moving pieces out there in the grant world. And we wanted to make sure that we gave two months to our municipalities to even know this was happening, and then another two months to apply. So that's what that timeline, uh, shows there. April first, you know, we started talking about it, and it closed in July. So all of spring and early summer, uh, this program timeline, uh, was, was in play. And then October is award because we want to make sure that our municipalities, uh, who, who are receiving these grant notices, that they have time to put it in their budget. So everything is timed perfectly to make it as easy as possible for our partners. Next slide. So, uh, what you see here up on the map in green, these are our five grant recommendations. We had fifteen applications this year, uh, five recommendations to you. The ones that are in black outline, uh, that have no color in them, those are the applicants. Uh, and the ones in green, like I said, are the recommendations. So you can see that our fifteen came from all corners of the county. This is exactly what we want to see every year. Next slide. So really quickly running through what these are, we have, uh, uh, one of the awards would be in Lower Providence. It would be to improve, uh, the traffic signal at Germantown Pike and Evansburg Road. Uh, they have a multi-pronged effort here. This is just the first piece of it to improve. This is just the first piece of it, to improve that signal. Put a left turn arrow in. So, if you're heading west, you can turn down Evansburg Road, get to Ridge Pike and not have to sit too long in traffic. It's only $72,000, and it's notable because Germantown Pike is a county-owned road. So, in some ways, they are using our money and their money to make an investment in the system that we own. We don't own the signal, but we do own the road in which that signal is. So, that's notable as well. Next slide. In Montgomery Township, this is a pedestrian improvement, and this program has funded a number of these around the county. They have two different roads with two different parks and two different neighborhoods that are across the street from the parks. So, these are essentially rapid flashing beacons and crosswalks to make it possible and safer for everyday people who live in these neighborhoods to get to these park assets that the township has invested in. And that is $271,000. Remember, there's two of them. Next slide. Over in Pottstown, they have a bridge, Moser Road, goes over Norfolk Southern, and that bridge is not in good shape. And so, the recommendation here is to use part of our grant award as well as their money to replace a bridge that they own over rail lines. Very important, this is the industrial part or one of the two industrial parts of Pottstown, so it's got an economic development component and an equity component. So, that would be about $450,000. Next slide. Our fourth one is, again, in Roersford. They've been very successful with this program over the years because they've been trying to improve walkability in their neighborhoods in a older borough where it's possible and easy to walk, but sometimes you have roads that are just a little bit hard to cross. And so, right in front of the Springfield Middle School, they proposed to put a rapid flashing beacon with an audible alert system so that students can walk to school every day and cross that road safely. So, that's about $92,000. Next slide. And then, the last one in Upper Marion, this would cross Henderson Road, which is quite a busy road, $150,000. Again, another rapid flashing beacon would connect the township building and the neighborhoods to the park they have there. You can see that on the map, and so, our selection committee felt this one was important because it connected a lot of things that people were already trying to get to by foot. Next slide. So, starting to wrap up here, just to put things into numerical and quantitative perspective, a couple of fun facts. So, the total grant amount that we're looking to recommend to you is just shy of, or not shy, just a little bit over $1 million, $1,034,320,000. We're looking at grant award recommendations to two boroughs and three townships, so again, you know, diversifying who this goes to. Two of those five do not contain a county-owned road or bridge, so that meets one of the goals we discussed. Roersford is a four-time grant awardee. It shows how successful they have been. They've had a very good application, they've really thought this through, and so, our selection committee has rewarded them. Other four are first-time awardees, which is important too. These are municipalities that had never received one in the first four years, and now we have extended this program to them. And overall, 27 of our 62 municipalities, that's 44%, have received a county transportation grant award. And so, you know, it's great that we're seeing increasing numbers every year that this is spreading around. It's going to be hard to get to 62, but we are making progress. The last one that's sort of cut off there is, we have 42, right, 42 awards? Matt Popek from our staff, who also helps run this program. He's counted the numbers here, 42 awards, about $5 million. That's been the success that we've seen here over five years. Next slide. So, that's our program website. If anyone in our audience wants to check out more details, they'd be happy to answer any questions about this recommended action.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into grant agreements with the appropriate municipal officials to fund the programs listed on the attached exhibits under the conditions specified for each. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. So, first of all, I just want to thank you, Mr. Edman and Mr. Popek. I know this is a huge amount of work. I want to thank the folks that went through all of these applications. I know it's very competitive every year, and this program is really living up to, you know, what we had hoped it would do, which is, while everybody in the county obviously benefits no matter where they live from a good transportation system across the county, we did want people to be able to benefit within their municipality, even if their particular municipality didn't have a county-owned road or bridge. So, it's great to see that these projects continue to move forward. And as always, I just want to make sure that anyone who did not get their grant recommended this year is getting feedback on how they could improve that application.
Yes, we do reach out to let them know that we are happy to talk this over. We've done that in the past. Not everyone takes advantage of it, but we let them know that it's available, and we're always happy to help them sharpen their applications for next time.
Great.
Thank you for the presentation. Our thanks to the committee who puts in a lot of time, I know, analyzing all the projects. Mr. Edman, what's the timeline for completion now? You know, once we vote, these are awarded, how long do the municipalities have then?
Yep, they have about three years. We give them what's essentially a contract. It's a legal document saying, this is your grant award, and you know, you got to update us and get this and that done. And so, we do have a three-year window in there. We're always happy to work with them. There have been a lot of extenuating circumstances the last few years, and in rare occasions we have given extensions because of things that our municipalities cannot help. But it's around three years to do it. So, we are seeing some of the year one and year two and year three grants actually being built and getting done.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edman.
You're welcome, Mr. Ed.
Okay, hearing no additional comment, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you both. All right, Ms. Pardue.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a five-page document dated Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, with a timestamp of 7:25 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I will move to approve the October 20th, 2022 Personnel Presentation is given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And now, I'll move on to our monthly announcement of the Way to Go MOCO winners. As you'll recall, this is an opportunity that's open to all county employees. The Way to Go MOCO program encourages employees to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, we've had more than 160 county employees who have submitted nominations singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw five employees from the list of nominations. These employees each win $150 in their paycheck to recognize them for their work. This month, I am pleased to announce the following five winners. First, John Gray, a park ranger, was nominated for his dedication and love for the park in keeping safety at the forefront for visitors. Next, we have Wendy Fuentes from the District Attorney's Office for working tirelessly to make sure that all of the assistant district attorneys have what they need every day and for going above and beyond. Next is Yvonne Turner from the Commissioner's Office for her work to step up and support residents displaced by Hurricane Ida in the fall of 2021. Fourth is Tara Yurger from our Health and Human Services Early Intervention Team for her work to support holiday gift drives for the children they work with and their programs every year. And last, Walter Wood, another park ranger who earlier this year saved a man's life. An individual went into cardiac arrest at the Norristown Farm Park. Mr. Wood called 911 and directed the ambulance to the location while staying with the man to keep him calm. So, congratulations to all of our winners. We will be reaching out to you by email with more details, and as a reminder to our employees, you can continue to nominate your colleagues for one of these awards. You can do that at the employee corner, and you'll find a nomination form there. Thank you. All right, next, Barbara O'Malley. We have advertisements and bids in our RFPs.
Number one, we have a bid on behalf of Assets and Infrastructure for construction of a maintenance building. The successful responder will construct a new maintenance building for Lower Perkyomen Valley Park to replace the building lost in Hurricane Ida. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, a bid on behalf of District Attorney for firearms. The successful responder will provide firearms and accessories for use by county detectives. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.mocopae.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of bids as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for the county.
One, contract award Assets and Infrastructure Bottled Water Ready Refresh of Louisville, Kentucky, $70,000. Contract provides for bottled water delivery to county-owned buildings. Water dispensers and delivery services are available through a PA state contract. Two, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Equipment, Lightspeed IS Incorporated of Woodbury, Minnesota, $59,500. Contract provides for two public access services with technical support which will replace current aging equipment. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Three, contract award Juvenile Probation and the Office of Children and Youth Consulting Services, multiple providers, $200,000, not to exceed one year. Contract provides for specialized psychiatric and psychological evaluation services for dependent and delinquent youth. RFP 2249 was viewed by 14 providers with three responses received. Contracts are awarded for psychological evaluation services only to the highest-rated responders. Contracts are a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Awarded responders, Hugh S. Smith, Ph.D. and Associate of PC of Lancaster, PA, Restoration Counseling Services, LLC of Media, PA. Four, contract amendment, Planning Commission, Construction Management, JVC Associates Incorporated of Upper Marion, PA, $80,000. Original contract provided for construction management and inspection for the entire construction phase of the Chester Valley Trail Project. Amendment provides for a major redesign of the trail location and related stormwater management facilities within the PICO Energy Corridor portion of the project area and a time extension of the contract through June 30, 2023. There are three contract renewals and three amendments for Health and Human Services. Those providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have the award of a contract for Assets and Infrastructure under major construction projects.
Yes, there is one contract amendment, Testing Services, Mollol LLC of York, PA, no cost extension. Original contract provides for Montgomery County Justice Center Performance Mockup Testing Services. Amendment provides for a no-cost extension of the contract through December 31, 2023 to continue and complete the mockup testing as per RFP.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Any closing commissioner comments? Okay, then I will announce upcoming meetings. We will have an Election Board meeting immediately following the conclusion of Salary Board here this morning, and our next Board of Commissioners meeting is November 3rd, 2022. I will move to adjourn the October 20th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. We'll welcome the Controller to the dais. Good morning, Controller Sanchez. All right, Ms. Francisco, do we have any public comment on Salary Board?
We do not.
Okay, then, Ms. Pardue.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a six-page document dated Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, with a timestamp of 7:21 a.m. Of note, we have four retirees, Carmen Irizari from Assets and Infrastructure after 28 years, Stephen Latzer from the District Attorney's Office after 24 years, Penny Lafferty from Health and Human Services after 20 years, and Teresa Santinello from Register of Wills after 18 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board considerations.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the October 20th, 2022 Salary Board Presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
Some.
Move by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? I do just want to make one, I know we're acknowledging one of the retirees shortly, but I just want to make a comment and give my personal thanks to Ms. Penny Lafferty, who tried to retire a year ago, maybe even a little bit more than that, but because we took a little longer than we had planned to select our new director of the Human Services Department, she stayed on, and I just want to thank her for doing that and wish her the best in her retirement. Yes, okay, then we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
We do have...
Yes, and we have a retiree acknowledgement, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. King. Good morning.
Good morning. Jesse King, Department of Assets and Infrastructure. As you heard, we have one retiree from public property today. Carmen Irizari retires after 28 years of service with the county. She started in 1994 doing custodial work in the HSC building. She was known to be a hard worker and extremely dedicated to her services there. After a number of years in that capacity, she transferred to work here in One Montgomery Plaza. Now, of note is that for much of her career, she was an evening worker, and I must say that it's a whole different animal when you're working second shift or third shift because those employees like Carmen show up to work oftentimes after everybody's left for the day. They do their service for the county and then head home before people even arrive. And the only evidence we see of their hard work and their service is, you know, what they did. We don't get the opportunity to see them face-to-face or to thank them for the work that they put in. Now, there are a lot, it's not just custodial work, there's a lot of other jobs across the county. I'm just pointing out that Carmen was a dedicated employee in that capacity for much of her career, and I think it's really important to take the time like this to recognize those employees that do that type of work. Now, it was her hard work and her dedication and her professional spirit that led her to a promotion to a supervisory role. She became our evening supervisor of custodial work that happened here in this building, a role she held from 2001 until her retirement here today. Again, when you're doing evening work, there are a lot more indifferent pressures when you're in a supervisory position when there's oftentimes nobody to turn to. You know, there's problems that come up or shift problems or coverage problems that are more than a phone call away, and we trusted Carmen to take care of those responsibilities. And a big part of her employment was stepping up and filling in when other people called out, because you're kind of on an island, you know, when you're working here after hours. And we really wanted to thank her for that. I must say, with all of these new buildings coming online, you know, the EOC, the Justice Center eventually, we're really going to miss people like Carmen. You know, that is a lot of institutional knowledge. You know, we could use her, and it took a lot for me not to beg her to stay here, you know, to get us through this transition with these new buildings, but I know what she's doing. She's retiring, she wants to spend time with her three sons and her seven grandchildren, and I'm certainly not going to argue with that. So, from all of us at Assets and Infrastructure, we want to thank her for her service to the county, and we wish her the best in her next steps during retirement. So, thank you very much.
Mr. King, thank you so much. It's a lovely tribute, and we wish Carmen and her family all the best and many, many happy years in retirement.
As a longtime Norristown resident, we hope to see her around, so she'll still be around.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn the October 20th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. And we will move into Salary Board.
All right, I will call to order the October 20th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Election Board, and note the presence of all three members. Is there any board comment? All right, Kelly, do we have any public comment? All right, then, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the October 6th, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Election Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Arkush. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All right, minutes are passed. We will now move on to authorization of changes to polling locations. Ms. Sawyer.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here today to request the authorization for the relocation of a few polling places for the 2022 general election to take place on November 8th, 2022. The Board of Elections is given the authority to, the Board of Elections is given the authority by the Election Code to relocate polling places as they see fit, and today, I am seeking the approval of the Board to relocate just three polling places. And you will notice on your supplemental document that there are four listed. And we did receive a, a phone call today from Cheltenham Township, so we will not be moving, requesting a move of Cheltenham 3-4. The Lamont Community Center has become available, and we will be able to remain there, so we will not be moving Cheltenham 3-4. We were able to acquire some space there, so to prevent any disruption to those voters, we are going to remain there. We would, however, like to move Lower Marion 6-2, from the Bryn Mawr Presbyterian Church, return them back to their previous polling location of the Black Rock Middle School, New Hanover 2. We did move last, in the primary, to the New Hanover Fire Company. If you recall, there was an emergency, we held an emergency board meeting, there was a emergent situation at another location that kind of necessitated us merging them with a, another precinct. We just don't feel like that space would be large enough to hold two polling locations for a general election, so we would like to move them to the New Hanover Lutheran Church. And Pottstown 2-1, the Invictus Church, similar situation, and we would like to move them to the Pottstown Elks Lodge. Notice has been posted at these locations that polls are being moved, as is required by law, and the locations have all been notified of the move. We have notified and worked with representatives from the local Republican and Democratic Parties regarding these moves.